Mayor Querem.
Here.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Fabia.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the conference room.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this law, with the great justice of God.
Now, we, a lot of people that haven't been here lately, we have two sessions of public comment. We're going to have a public comment session now, so if you wish to speak. We also have a public comment at the end of the meeting as well, so you can speak then as well. So, any public comments? Okay, go on to approval of minutes, Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on Monday, August seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I second.
Motion's been seconded. Any corrections? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. And now we'll go to payment of bills. We'll first start with invoices with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have the bills for the Department of Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances. In Planning Department, eighteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. In Administration, twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Self-insurance, sixteen thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Economic Development, fifty thousand dollars. Tourism, fifteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and six cents. Property Department, five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents. And Community Development, two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. That brings a grand total for the Departments of Public Affairs and Council of Finances to one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, seven-hundred dollars and thirteen cents. Mayor, I have reviewed these bills, find them to be true and correct. Remove the table.
I second.
Motion's been seconded. Any corrections, comments?
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now we'll go to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening I have the bills and payrolls for the Department of Streets and Public Improvement as follows. In the Street Department, a total of sixty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Motor fuel tax, a ton of twenty thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Wastewater collection, twenty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and sixty-four cents. Wastewater treatment, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Wastewater administration, four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Cemetery Department, a total of thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. And garbage expenditures, twenty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and thirty cents. For a grand total of five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Mayor Querem, I would examine the bills and payrolls, find them to be true and correct, and request payment made.
I second.
Motion's been seconded. Any corrections, comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Now we'll go to Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the bills for Public Health, Safety and Civil Defense. The Police Department is one-thousand, eight dollars, six-hundred-and-ninety, one-hundred-and-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, ninety-eight cents. Fire ambulance is eighty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars, sixty-four cents. For a total of one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. I have reviewed these bills, I believe them to be true and accurate, and I move they be made.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any comments or corrections? Call rolls.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. In Commissioner Warren's absence, we'll go back to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening in filling in for Commissioner Warren, who cannot be here, this evening I have the bills from the Public Property Utility Department. In the Electric Department, a total of one-thousand dollars. In Electric Generation, a total of hundred-and-two thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and three cents. In Electric Distribution, ninety-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and forty-one cents. In Electric Administration, twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-eleven dollars and sixty-nine cents. In Water Treatment, thirty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. In Water Distribution, fifteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and twenty cents. And in Water Administration, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars and fifteen cents. For a grand total of two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Mayor, I would examine the bills and payrolls, find them to be true and correct, and request payment made.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any corrections or comments?
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make a comment about these bills. You know, we go through these bills, and there's a lot of bills that we go through. We go through these at every meeting. And, you know, the commissioners, they have their own departments, and we go through, the bills are actually a stack of bills, many times about this thick. And they're all responsible for going through their department's invoices and checking the bills to make sure that they are, everything's reviewed and that they are accurate. And many times, there'll be questions on bills, and we will pull those bills out to be a clarification, and they never make it to the meeting to be approved. So, just a little, I guess, education on what we, how we do these bills, because there's an awful lot of bills to process.
Just one other comment. There's, I think most of all of the commissioners review all the bills. We'll look at each and every one of them, and we think ours are, obviously, but we look at every one of them.
Yeah, that's correct. Now we'll go on to regular business, and start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to hear a financial report from Perry Memorial Hospital. I'd like to introduce the CEO of the hospital, Rex Conger.
Thank you. I am Rex Conger, six-twenty-four, Market Drive here in Princeton. And I'd also like to introduce Mike Defoe, who is our new CFO.
Rex, can I tell you to just put the switch forward on the top of the mic?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Defoe. I'm the new CFO of Perry Memorial, twenty-three-twenty-nine, Millia Drive here in Princeton. I will kick things off then, a quick review of the financial reports of Perry Memorial Hospital, fiscal year ended April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen. The auditors in Gladry and Pullman presented the audit for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen to the hospital board of directors on July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Based on their audit and the opinion, the financial statements presented tonight, in all material respects, presents fairly the financial position of the hospital. The hospital's statement of operations for the year ending April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, showed loss of one-million, seven-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. The hospital experienced gross patient revenue at seventy-one point five million. That was nine percent increase over fiscal year fourteen. Of that seventy-one point five million in revenue, we wrote off thirty-eight point eight billion dollars, and that thirty-eight point eight million is made up of three kinds of write-offs. Contractual adjustments is one. Those we incurred due to contracts we have with commercial payers and the limited reimbursements by government programs. These adjustments represent the difference between the hospital's charges for its services and the amounts we actually are reimbursed. For instance, contractual adjustments for Medicare were two-point-two million more than fiscal year fourteen. Contractual adjustments for Medicaid were two-point-eight million over than fourteen. And contractual adjustments for other insurances such as LUCAS, Blue Shield, were six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand more than fiscal year fourteen. Another write-off is the financial assistance, which is for patients who meet our hospital guidelines. And for fiscal year fifteen, approximately one point, or one-billion, fifty-five thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars was provided in financial assistance for our community. This was eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars less than fiscal year fourteen. And then we also incurred bad debt for those patients who never end up paying for their services. That is the amount, or that amount was one-point-seven million, which was a decrease of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand from fiscal year fourteen. When we net the thirty-eight point eight million in adjustments against the seventy-one-and-a-half million in gross charges, we end up with thirty-three point six million in net patient service revenue that we can use to cover our operating expenses for the year. The net patient service revenue was an increase of four-point-three percent over fiscal year fourteen, and that increase was even, or even with an increase in revenue deductions of eighteen percent over the prior year. Overall expenses increased by three percent from fiscal year fourteen. Salaries and wages increased significantly because of the added professionals and staff brought on as part of the hospital-based clinic, Perry Memorial Family Health Clinic. Management efforts continued in monitoring the overall operating expenses and supplies and purchase services were held lower in fiscal, or held lower than fiscal year fourteen. The process of closely reviewing operational expenses is continuing through this fiscal year. We are seeing some of the effects of healthcare reform as we see financial assistance reducing and Medicaid increasing, as people are required to have insurance. Medicaid does not reimburse well and will not lead to an increase in net revenue. Currently and historically, Medicaid is not timely with payments, and increases to utilization will also increase days in account receivable. We believe we have built the necessary changes for the fiscal fifteen budget to improve our experience from last year. Those changes include, we continue to monitor all operating expenses and capital expenditures. The healthcare reform was passed in two thousand and nine, or proactively reviewing, so we can anticipate each aspect of the healthcare reform before it's implemented. We have successfully attested for stage one meaningful use of the electronic medical record technology, and we're currently working on stage two. And the successful adaptation for stage two will avoid penalties set up with the healthcare reform. Sequestration in the State of Illinois finances and healthcare reimbursement are having us continually monitor and adjust as we can without compromising quality patient care or access to services for the community of Princeton. The balance sheet remains strong for the hospital with our average days cash on hand remaining at a hundred-and-forty-six. Perry Memorial Hospital has been very fortunate that we've been able to utilize funds from operations instead of debt to pay for our technology upgrades, building renovations, and most of our medical equipment. Our total assets increased by five percent and liabilities decreased by three percent. The healthcare industry has constant change with governmental regulations and reimbursement while trying to keep up with the new technology and retaining quality healthcare professions. We need to monitor rural healthcare legislation considered by Congress and continue to scrutinize and evaluate our processes to be able to provide, excuse me, to be able to provide quality healthcare to the communities we serve. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Rex.
So, you've heard the financials and the fact that there was a loss from operations for last year. We want to remind everyone that the board of directors for the hospital looked at our budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen as an investment year, and we're looking at our current fiscal year as a growth year, and I'll explain that. Starting with community benefit, which is a term that the state came up with that is a dollar amount that is intended to reflect those expenses that a hospital experiences as we serve our community. That dollar amount for Perry Memorial last year was over twelve million dollars. That includes indigent and subsidized healthcare services that Mike just reviewed, volunteer services, contributions and donated services provided throughout our service area. Let me share some of the most visible. Camp Net was a four-day opportunity for fifteen junior high students to explore careers in healthcare. That's our second year to partner with Northwest Illinois AHEC to provide this opportunity for students. Next was the Mega Brain. This was a partnership with Cipasa and Northern Illinois AHEC. The Mega Brain is the world's only inflatable walkthrough exhibit, and we had over nine-hundred-and-fifty children and the community members participate in that educational experience. We're also a supporting partner with Bureau of County Health and Wellness Clinic. We provide funds to support the nursing program at Illinois Valley Community College, to name a few. New programs and services to enhance care and services we offer include our rehabilitation department launching balanced screening. Falls are reported to be the number one reason for those over sixty-five, excuse me, to be visiting their healthcare provider. The screening assistance assesses patients who feel unsteady and are experiencing falls or have a fear of falling. Physical therapy is then available to help the individual. Another new service is home sleep studies. Patients are instructed on the use of the equipment. They take it home, perform the test in the convenience and comfort of their own bed, and the equipment comes back and the test is scored, and the results are reported to the patient and to their physician. A major change for us over the last year also occurred about a year ago at this time as the Princeton family physicians transitioned into Perry Memorial Family Health Clinic. That transition included two physicians and one nurse practitioner, and we immediately began the process to replace the physician who retired just prior to that transition. I'm pleased to share with you that we have been successful in recruiting. We now have one new full-time physician, Dr. James Matthew, and two additional full-time nurse practitioners, Karen Nene and Jennifer Hostin. We also have a contract with another new physician who will be joining us next year, and that is Christopher Blandford, who grew up in this area. We're continuing to recruit as we see Perry Memorial Family Health Clinic as one of the keys to long-term access to primary care throughout the Princeton area. The size of the clinic is doubling, and we will take us from nine exam rooms to eighteen, and this construction just started. This will allow us to continue to expand hours so that we can conveniently see patients from seven a.m. to seven p.m., Monday through Thursday, each week, and from five a.m. to five-thirty p.m., or five a.m. to five-thirty p.m. on Fridays. And we also anticipate taking walk-ins and providing some weekend coverage as well. Recently, we applied for and are scheduled to be inspected for designation as a rural health clinic. Federal designation as a rural health clinic provides enhanced reimbursement for services provided to Medicare and Medicaid patients. This in turn provides greater financial stability and again the opportunity to recruit additional primary care providers. A bit earlier last year, we had welcomed Dr. Boone Brackett as part-time and backup orthopedic surgeon, as we also brought in Dr. Frank Minardi as a full-time orthopedic surgeon. With these two surgeons, we are able to provide comprehensive orthopedic surgeons twenty-four seven through sixty-five. Both Dr. Brackett and Dr. Minardi are experienced surgeons with great reputations for high-quality and compassionate care. We've also, during the last year, added hospitalist services. Hospitalist physicians specialize in taking care of inpatients. This is similar to the transition many years ago from your family physician being called in when you were a patient in the emergency department. Physicians in the E D now who specialize in providing emergency care are the ones that are working in the emergency department. Hospitalists are focused on consistency of care, utilizing best practices for inpatients. Having our hospitalist program also makes Perry Memorial in the Princeton area much more attractive to young physicians who are looking for a practice opportunity where there's a balance between work-life and home-life. During last year, we were also able to significantly expand urological services available here. Dr. Schwartz and Dr. Chung with Illinois Urologic Health Surgeons Group opened a new clinic with office hours and blocked surgical schedules at Perry. Their services now also include lithotripsy. Perry Memorial Hospital is also the first hospital on the I-80 corridor last year to be designated as a State of Illinois Emergent Stroke Ready Hospital, and we were recently the first to receive the re-designation. During the last year, we were able to bring onboard a new chief operating officer, Annette Schnabel. Recently, we brought in Jim Lee Windowski as our vice president of human services, and Mike Defoe is our new chief financial officer. With Jim and Mike's arrival, this is the first time in the last six years that the executive team is at full strength with permanent staff. That provides us with a leadership power to accomplish many things in our organization and throughout our service area. One of the newest partnerships that we have is with Illinois Valley Community Hospital. Almost two years ago, we announced that we were forced to close our obstetrical service due to reduced number of deliveries, reduction of reimbursement by Medicaid, and sequestration by the federal government, which further reduced our income and removed much-needed money that we had been using each year to subsidize the obstetrical services. This summer, Dr. Lagaway retired, and we had no one local to provide GYN or OB services. As you may have seen in the media, we have a new relationship with I V C H who enabled us, with them, to combine our services and theirs to offer comprehensive women's health services. This includes providing outpatient gynecological services, pre and post-nail care, along with an array of other services and education packaged specifically for women locally. We are currently renovating new space in the fourth floor of the medical office building that will allow us to partner, to allow our partnership to expand and add additional services as we try to keep as many services as possible local. Last we experienced, last year, we also experienced our first in many first, this is the first experience we had had in many years, and that was the change in the hospital's board of directors. Ryder McCabe, who had been on the board for over twenty years, retired. With that change, you, the city council, identified Deb Madison as a replacement board member. Deb brought to us years of volunteer services and a strong background, so we thank you for Deb Madison, who is now a very active part of the hospital's board of directors. In closing, I can assure you that we are experiencing another challenging year filled with many opportunities to continue to enhance the quality care and customer services that we offer, and we are proud to be a hospital. So, you have any questions of me or Mike?
I know that the, first the numbers don't sound all that great, but you know, it's like forty percent of the hospitals in Illinois currently are losing money, but I know that we're on the right track to get that turned around, and I think you're projected here in the next couple of years to start, you know, part of the black, which is what we're hopeful for. But, you know, our hospital is incredibly important to this community, and we need to support it, and I think I have full faith and confidence in you and your team and the board, and you'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is a planning commission recommendation. This is a request for a special use permit by the First Christian Church. The commissioners are requesting a special use for 105 South Main Street to allow religious assembly in B Street District in order to use part of the existing building for holding church services, and the existing businesses will remain in that same building. Mayor, I am making a motion that we approve this special use permit.
I second.
Motion's been seconded. Any comments, concerns?
This is the building, it's actually right across the street, just a couple of blocks to us, really, with the children's curves and paper.
Paper.
Yeah, so that's the building we're talking about.
And I support it, obviously, stating to be ever involved with it on the real estate side of the house.
Call roll.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Stay.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
My last item, Mayor, is the building permit report for the month of August. In residential, we have nine new permits for a total value of twenty-three thousand, three-hundred dollars. In commercial and industrial, we have three new permits for two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, five-hundred dollars. Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, and that is for the Perry Clinic remodeling that Rex Conger just talked about. Total for the year two thousand and fifteen, we have sixty-six permits worth about eleven million dollars. A year ago, we had seventy-eight permits that were valued at about three-point-seven million. And two years ago, fifty-five permits for about four million. So, this is the entry year for Princeton. We've got some major projects taking place, and I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Now we'll go on to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have ordinance number zero dash one-five dash zero-nine dash zero-one dash five-one. An ordinance amending Princeton City Code Chapter Seven, Licenses and Business Regulations, Article Eleven, Alcohol Liquor. We basically are increasing the Class B license from twenty-five to thirty. Open Class Bs to fourteen. And yeah, that's the motion. First reading.
I'll second that. Motion's been seconded. Comments, concerns?
I have two comments regarding this. If the spoons, not attached to this, I would be hooking against this because of my fear that these licenses are going to the video gaming parlor. We're seeing a large increase. I feel that we are hurting our bar tavern industry, who have been good tax revenue for many years. The overall costs to these, overhead costs to these parlors are nothing compared to the taverns and bars. And let's see, I have some numbers here. April, we increased to fifty, which saw our largest tax reduction in the city. From May until July, we increased seven more poker machines. Our revenue has gone down. So, I believe we are saturating the market, and I would like maybe further discussion on capping how many video hookers we are allowing in town.
We certainly have some discussion, yeah, moving forward.
The reason for this ordinance, obviously, is because we ran out of liquor licenses. So, we have to, is the reason why we're expanding, passing this ordinance, so we have more liquor licenses.
Any further comments?
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Fabian. Now we'll go to Commissioner Mabry to take over for Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor Querem. This evening we have an agreement with Key Outdoors signing the agreement. Basically, is where we have a billboard signed out, I would say correctly east of the old Sullivan's Grocery Store, and we have one face of that, there's a double-sided billboard, and Key Outdoors requesting that they would be swapping us, instead of us having our Welcome to Princeton right there at that location, they would give us two locations out on Interstate, one over near Peru for the traffic coming east, traveling west, and one about eight miles out on Interstate eighty, the traffic coming from the west, traveling east. And we've looked these two alternate locations over and see that have a positive benefit, and I know the chambers had some input on this, and they feel good about it too. So, I'm making a recommendation that we enter into agreement with Key Outdoors to swap them signage as per this memo.
I'll second.
Motion's been seconded. Some comments? This is one of the things that Pete brought up, is that on this billboard that's out here, it's the billboard that, the site that we have is that you're coming into town, and as Pete has said, you know, when you see that billboard, you're already in town. So, these two billboards out on Interstate eighty, I think it's a pretty good, pretty good deal. So, we would more or less recreate new graphics for each one of those signs to encourage people to get off at the exit and so forth.
Any further comments? Go ahead, call roll.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
Mayor Querem, the next item of business we have is a settlement of a claim, and the, is a Mrs. Christensen that was injured in a trip on a sidewalk, and there's a settlement for a monetary amount of money of three thousand dollars, and we unfortunately feel bad for Mrs. Christensen, and we want to move forward with this. So, I'm requesting, making a recommendation that we approve the settlement as agreed and to Mrs. Christensen.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any further comments? This sidewalk, it, by the way, is over by South Fifth Street between Mason Drive and Crowning Drive, and
It's been repaired.
And it has been repaired, so go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Warren. Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querem.
Aye.
I have under Commissioner Warren's business, Mayor Querem, is a renewal of land use agreement with Future Farmers of America. This past year, two thousand and fifteen, growing season, we entered into a contract, a fifty-fifty lease agreement with the Future Farmers of America through the Princeton High School, and it worked out well. They farm the grounds that we call the catch park, it'd be out there where the pond is, and we have a combination of corn out there and yeast so far grown. So, we've got a good relationship, it's a So, we've got a good relationship, it's a positive thing for the youth at the high school, and so I make a recommendation that we continue the lease into 2016, or we, the reason we act on it this fall, we'll be doing some volatility work, so I make a recommendation that we approve that lease as soon as possible.
I'll second. Motion's been seconded. Further comments? Call roll. Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabian.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
And by the way, on this, on this farm lease, there is a clause in there that that property is designed for economic development, and we will continue to try to market that, we will market that property, so if it sells, then there's a, there is an out. Okay, thanks, Commissioner Mavory. Now, we'll go to me.
I think we have bid results.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Again, under Commissioner Warren's absence, we have bid results. The, what was done was, there was a combination of borrowings for Back Home Road. We had let bids for borrowings of a water main that goes out into Bailey subdivision, as well as some sanitary service mains that would be bored under the Back Home Road that would provide sanitary service over to the three homes on the south side of Back Home Road. There was one bid received for that work for a total of eighty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and fifty cents from Superior Excavating. We've used them in the past for work, they do an excellent job, and my recommendation is we approve this with the understanding that they will begin to post haste on that work to be done out there.
One second. Motion's been seconded. Any further comments? This is, and Ray brings up a very important point, I think this, the way this bid came out, they have sixty days from when we pass this to get the work done, but actually, we want to get them out there at Bailey subdivision as soon as possible, we're going to press that upon them, and I don't think it's a
I think sixty days to start.
Sixty days to start the work, yeah, so we want to get them out there, obviously, a lot sooner than that, and actually, I think it's only a, maybe a two or three day job somewhere in that area, so we'll push them to get this done, so we can get the water hook up going. Any further comments? Call roll. Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabian.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Mavory. Now, I've got, I've got a couple of, a couple of appointments. First, to the Princeton Public Library, awarding the directors, appointing Terry Madison to build an unexpired term of Alan Davidson through June thirtieth of 2016, and to the Princeton Plan Commission to appoint Tom Hall to build the unexpired term, looking at list of borough staff runs through April thirtieth of 2018. I make a motion that we approve these two appointments.
Second. Motion's been seconded. Any further comments? Go ahead, call roll. Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mavory.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabian.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
And, we did this city update. First of all, we've had a lot of discussion about the Darius Miller Park project. We're going to shortly after Homestead Festival, we're going to get in there, and the city is going to strip that park. Basically, we're going to take the, we're going to take the fountain out, we're going to take the shelter down, we're going to remove all the sidewalks. We are going to, at this point, leave the light poles and the light poles and the time capsule, and we want to flatten the mounds to the extent that they don't affect the nearby trees, in case where it's gotten up into the mound, so we're going to be taking a look at that. And what we do going forward then, and is going to be left up to a committee that we're establishing, and I'm going to name that tonight, who's going to serve on the committee, and this committee will be, get up and running pretty shortly after the park is bare, so we want to get this going as soon as possible. So, we've got nine committee members. They are L. Taylor, Cliff Hartwright, David Hornbaker, Kate Crishman, Mike Saylor, Ann Crosby, Willie Went, Carolyn Diller, and Steve Kaiser. So, that will be the committee that will take us forward on the Darius Miller project and hope to get that going very soon. So, at this time, I have a proclamation to read. And this is the, this is the, in the naming of a city flower for the city of Princeton. We have Kate Crishman to thank for this, she took this job on herself, and how she's working with the, with the chamber going forward. She's got a lot of big plans going in the future as far as the duplication of our main street, and this is the first step, so I'm just going to read the proclamation as she presents it. Whereas the city of Princeton, along with the Chamber of Commerce, recognizes the zinnia as the official town flower, and whereas the zinnia was chosen because it attracts butterflies, it comes in a variety of colors and sizes, as well as coming in combinations of colors, and whereas the zinnia is representative of lasting affection, which is what we all have for the friends we have made here and what we feel for our community, and whereas our affection for one another and our town reminds us of the many kinds, acts of kindness that surrounds us, and now therefore I do, Joel Querom, Mayor Princeton, join with the city council in proclaiming the zinnia as our city flower and asking our residents to join us in celebrating this flower. So, again, thank you to Kate Crishman. Okay, do we have any, go to whole business, any whole business?
We do have an issue I'd like to discuss just for a few minutes this evening. I'm not asking the council to take any action on it, just as a discussion point. A few months back, the city elected to offer that the garbage pickup would be done, basically, every week you could put just about anything out to the curb, we would pick it up except for electronics, and we've had some real challenges. In the process of all this, the guys that are on the back of the garbage truck, they'll pull up, and there could be like a half of a household of stuff sitting out there by the street, including, you know, furniture, mattresses, and you just never know what they're going to be picking up, and the, the goal was, I believe, was instead of having a spring cleanup, was to be able to clean as we went, but we've had some challenges with that. I brought some pictures along, the, the garbage truck crew took some pictures just from one week, and I want to pass these down to them to look at and see what we're dealing with. We have, you know, it goes back to ninety-five percent of the residents are doing the right thing, and other people are, they must be remodeling the kitchen on a weekend, and everything that's at for construction debris is out there on Monday, but the garbage pickup might not be till Friday, so everything gets wet during the five or six days of sitting out. We've got, a little research shows that garbage collection is one of the top five workman comp claims of people that get injured, a combination of picking up heavy things, and you twist your back and turn to put those items in the back of the garbage truck. So, I'm going to ask the council to consider that we could discuss this at a council meeting, where Commissioner Warren's here for input from him, but we would go back to maybe say November, first week of November, to where we go back to picking up, say, a traditional can that would be put out, and we would have a spring cleanup again, because we're just, we're beating up the guys in the back of the garbage truck, picking up a lot of stuff that they weren't ready to be picking up on a regular basis, and again, when things get wet, I also think about how we're going to get into snow and ice, and for them to be out there picking through snow piles of this garbage, it's just not a good thing. We'll let the public look at those pictures after the announcement, but that's just one week's worth of items, and it's just, again, it's just crazy stuff people put out there at the curb, and, and so the goal is to think about maybe going back to the old system, given the public enough ample time to be aware that we're going to go back to that. We tried it, and in my opinion, it did not work, that's my opinion.
Are you thinking maybe in the spring of next year, or something yet this year, or what?
I, I would propose that, giving them an advance warning, I mean, I would start something like the first November, where we go back to the conventional, where we pick up a can for each resident, and then they would tag additional cans if need be, and of course, we'll still pick up recyclables, we'll still pick up, you know, in the normal conditions we do in our brush, so we have a lot of things we're doing already, but it's just, it's just not working, it's just, there's a lot of reasons, you know, you go to a full compartment house or an alley, you've got two sofas and a lazy boy, and try and put all that in the garbage truck, it's just, and since sitting there for a week collecting moisture, it's just, it's just not working.
And it's a fifty-pound limit, correct?
I, Pete, do you know what William's fifty-pound limit is? And, and again, we give the public time to educate, so we've realized that we confuse them by creating a change that just did not work, so I just think that it's just, and again, I'd like that Commissioner Warren can put on these two.
All right. To burn a little bit, and ask you, what is recycling center, how's that been going lately?
Well, I have to really commend the police chief and the department, the, you know, we started this recycling center about a year ago, and I know, I know we have lots of pressing issues in Princeton besides garbage and recycling, but it's, it's a combination of things that we deal with every day as commissioners. The recycling center was one of those things that infuriated me, when you go through there and find all the stuff that was, should not have been there, and again, five percent of the people were, were doing the wrong thing. With the cameras and with good enforcement from the Princeton Police Department, we've caught a lot of perpetrators, and they pay fines, and, and that's, if you drive through there now, it, it's kind of out of the ordinary to find something that is really a blatant non-recyclable item, and that's good, we've come a long ways with that, so I appreciate Chief, what you've done with that, and the cameras, and, and your staff, so thank you.
Seeing the names in the paper of the defenses, it's a big concern.
The cameras, they're the big numbers.
All right. Any more old business, new business?
Yes, I do. I would just like to announce the Princeton Fire Department was awarded an AST grant through the Department of Homeland Security. This grant was applied for to replace Medic Eight Forty-Three, which is the oldest ambulance in our fleet. The grant amount is a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, in which the city share is only five percent. I would just like to say, if I may speak for all of us, we would like to thank Congressman King Zinder for awarding our fire department with this grant, and a special thanks to Chief Welling. Just a few hours before the deadline, there was a snag, no folks in the city, and the full grant was not looking good, but for Chuck's perseverance, we were awarded the full amount. Thank you, Chuck.
And I'd like to piggyback on the fire department, you know, we had another fire on South Main Street this weekend, and if anybody saw one in the back, if you saw the pictures on Facebook and social media, I mean, this thing was, there was, this thing was in flames when it first started, when the fire department got there, and to think that they were able to confine the fire to where they did, I mean, when you look at it from the rear, you can see how that whole corner would have gone out, and this is the second fire in that area in the last couple of years, you know, Heaven Arrows burned a couple of years ago, and they were able to confine that to the Heaven Arrows building as well, so the fire department and all the communities that assisted the Princeton Fire Department battling this fire just did an outstanding job, and we're just very lucky, very lucky to have the emergency services that we deal with in this town. One other thing, I got two more things. We've been doing a lot of street projects and store projects around town, and, you know, we, it wasn't that long ago when we were utilizing basically one engineering firm for our, for our work, for our sewers and sanitary storm sewers and our street work and so on. We kind of got away from that about three years ago, and now we've got, at any one time, we've got like four different engineering firms that we work with on these projects, and it's very confusing to me to keep on top of what's going on and who's overseeing what, and in some of these cases, we don't have an engineer overseeing anything. So, as we move forward, and I think what we like to do, what I like to do, is, you know, maybe get into a, a process where we start, look at the engineering firms that we've been using, and let's, you know, pick one, let's, let's pick, you know, the best of the, of the group, and bring them on board as our chief engineering firm for the city of Princeton, because I, what we're doing now, I'm just hoping it works. And one more thing, Troop Ten-Sixty-Three, here in Princeton, Illinois Boy Scout Troop, Harold Bud Wedge is celebrating his fiftieth year in scouting, and they, or achieving a fifth year in scouting, there will be a reception for him at the Hampshire Colony Congregational Church, this is on September fourteenth. I look, that's located at six-oh-four South Church Street in Princeton, the program will begin at seven P.M., so congratulations to Bud as fighting the chief. Any other new business? Now, we have a public comment. You know, I, I know we have some residents here from Bailey, and you don't have to speak if you don't want to, but, you know, this might be a good opportunity, and I know there's been a lot of frustration that's going on out at the Bailey subdivision with the, with the work that's been going out there, and, you know, we'd like to hear your concerns. I think we pretty much know what your concerns are, but if you'd like to, you have an opportunity now to speak, and if not, that's fine too. I guess what we would like to Hold on a second. You have to come up with the, and all we need is your name, just your name for the record.
Sure. I'm Bob Rupstich, I live at two-fourteen Bailey Court, and I guess I'll speak a little bit for the residents. I guess what I'm looking for is that we had wrote the mayor and the council a letter dated October, or, I'm sorry, September twenty-fourth, and I guess we would like your comments on the letter, we would.
Well, we got the letter, and we've all got it, we've all read it. We aren't going to make any decisions at tonight's meeting, because we are missing that Commissioner Warren.
Kind of the important commissioner.
Yes, that's right. So, we, we've all had the letter, we've all read through it, you know, there's obviously some valid points in the letter, and we need to address these concerns, and we will do that. I don't really want to get into addressing them here tonight, per se, because again, I want, I'd like to have a whole council, and this isn't something we can go in closed session on, and so, you know, it has to be discussed in open meeting, and, and again, I'd like to have Bob, and we still, even with Bob not here, we would still like to hear the concerns, I mean, if there's anything more over and above what we have documented in the, in the letter.
Well, the, the letter documented the conditions at the time, we have a further condition that's developed, that I think some of the council members may be aware of, aware of, is that we do have a, a leak that has developed on the one well system. It seems to coincide with the, with the sewer stubbing that was put in, in a certain area. The leak has been verified by plumbing personnel, it's also been verified by the increase in the, in the electric usage on the, on the well for that, it's been kind of troubled in the last, in the last two months. But there is a leak that's out there, we're concerned that that leak will burn out the, the pump. If that pump is burned out, we know that's a significant cost, we think that cost should be, and will have to be repaired by the city, we'd like to see that leak repaired, and I guess we've had some comments to this point, that the leak will not be repaired until the water is installed, we don't find that to be satisfactory.
Well, I'll break, well, that was out, because like I said, they confirmed that there is a leak somewhere, the problem is, it could be anywhere between that well and the fifteen home that's on that, on that line, and the only way you can identify and find the leak is start digging up everybody's, you know, starting at the well and going forward.
Well, it's a little more, it's, it's a little easier from that. There's twelve homes on the well, just for the record, so, twelve homes on, on two wells in this, in the part, in the area that I maintain. We believe we know where the leak is at, and that, we think that's been somewhat verified, also just by some probing actions that have been made in that area. It's in an area that, we've had leaks in the past, it's in an area that was severely damaged by the, by the contractor tugging that area, we believe we know where the leak is at. If all break, it says it's between one and twelve homes, I think that'd be enough.
Well, he's, he's, you know, when he's looking at that, and he's looking at the beach on the well and everything, you can tell that there's apparently a leak somewhere, it's just that he couldn't identify where it would be anywhere along that line.
We can help him.
Well, we're, and I was out there last week, I ended up, I was out there with him, and we were going to walk around there. Where, where is this approximately?
It's right in front of the, the stand right
I have pictures here.
Well, we'll have to get together with him and discuss that, maybe even get all the reps back in ball just, you know, to verify.
I, I understand it's tough for the fire until it percolates up to the ground, and I think we're, we're in pretty good, pretty good agreement where we, where we believe it's at. It could be a sanitary condition with the leak, although generally it isn't, because you're pushing water out, but the infrastructure of the, the well, this well supports seven homes, by the way, the one we're talking about, if we destroy that pump, that's significant, that's downhole work, and, you know, down, downhole well work is going to be expensive, and Ray, you're certainly probably most, most familiar with that.
Well, it's one of the reasons why we want to get this boring done, you know, I'd go in immediately, so we can get, we can get the whole thing resolved in that way, but we'll have to, we'll have to get that out, see them look at it, because, I mean, if it's, if it's, if we can locate it, I mean, if we can centralize the location, you know, we need to fix, now, what about water pressure, as, as you go down the line, I mean, is there
The residents, at least the residents I've talked to, the companies around that well have experienced a decrease in water pressure.
I, I know that Mayor Querom was out there weeks ago, I wasn't able to be there, so this is Tuesday night, so what I'd like to do then, if I could, is take a look out there tomorrow, I don't just come to look at it, I'm a visual guy, I got to see what got going on, then I can report back to the council division what we see and talk with Tim or two about it, so. two about it, so, we don't want to leave you high and dry.
And that's what we're asking for, we just, we, we, you know, again, as the letter expressed, we just want to make sure that, you know, our concerns are being addressed, and we hope they are. And in this particular case, I think waiting for this thirty to sixty days before we see a water hookup is, is gonna be an unacceptable condition for a leak that's, that's something else, especially with, with the chance to destroy infrastructure, that's not good.
Well, if we, if we can identify it, I mean, I hope you do, it'll be fixed, I think.
Other, other than that, the concerns and the proposed remedies are, are in the letter, we respectfully ask your consideration.
Yes, we'll get it, thank you. Any other further public comments? We'll just, we'll just need your name and address, just name for the record.
Okay. Hi, I'm Debbie Stanberry from, well, it's a court. The area, as Mayor Querom, I thank you very much for coming out on Thursday, I thank Ray Mabry for coming out to my home, and Tim for repeatedly coming out to my home and listening to my frustration. The leak that we're talking about, no big over here, it's in front of my house. When you say it cannot be pinpointed, come out and see the grass is about this tall in front of my house compared to the grass in the rest of my lawn, and it's dying. So, I think it's very easy to pinpoint the area. If someone would like to look at these, this is the area that was dug up by my house from Gentini. You start with a little hole that looks quite innocent, and this is when they were putting in the sewer, whatever they were doing, and they dug this up not once, they filled it in once. A few days later, they came and totally dug up this area the second time. Why, I have no idea. When I, I was, I was going, obviously, I had some surgery last week, when I came home Saturday night, I heard this mystery sound in my house, not knowing what it was. I called my son on Sunday, he came, I thought it was my cell phone, so we unplugged that, it wasn't, it was, it continued in my home, my house, the pipes in my home, to say they're rattling is an understatement. It sounds like I have a monster living in my crawl space. I've had other people come in and listen to it, and I'm like, God, you know, you're gonna have damage from this with the, the pipes within my home, and, and the ones that have come to my home and spoke to this, you showed concern, and I really thank you for that. But, the thought of this going on, I don't know what the completion date with the boring is, I know you don't know that, I do know from what you're seeing, I am very grateful you've accepted the bid tonight on that, so this will start, but timeframe, I don't know. You know, I understand you're not wanting to have to start digging that up, there's ten thousand million goes of gravel out there, and what I was told was, that has to bubble through the ground, that is never gonna bubble through the ground, and you've got the yard of gravel that has been put out there between the city and Gentini, that is not gonna bubble through the ground. So, my concern is that from my home, the pipes in my home, when Albrecht came, they actually secured pipes in my basement because they are rattling so bad.
No, look, no.
Um, I don't know, it's like it rattles one direction and the next night, and there's actually a time I sound like I have a cat meowing in my basement, some squeaking with the water in those pipes, so, I mean, it's very disturbing when you, you come home and I'm dealing with, with what I'm dealing with, it's trying to recover here, and now I'm dealing with this issue, it truly is overwhelming. I mean, I thank the city for what you're trying to do, but the thought that this goes on for, you're saying possibly sixty days, if I'm understanding, is for completion, and I do understand you're trying to push this forward.
The, the way that, the way that, that reads is that from today, because we just approved it, they have sixty days to start the project.
Oh, to start the project.
That's what you understand, yeah.
I'm Adam Wright, here at the eighty, all three parts, our outlook, which go to my-
Starting the boards, we'll probably get in there right around, probably a week, two weeks, maybe three tops, depending, depending on Bullseye, boring, because they're gonna have to come in and bore it. But if I can push it, I'll be here in a week to do it, and it's only gonna be about three to four days to finish.
Okay. You know, if that would be a-
That'd be great.
You know, and, and then, it's just, I worry about my own personal home. It's, there's two houses that have noticed rattling in their pipes, there's three houses that are noticing difference in their water pressure, so to say this is a concern to me is an understatement, and now, when at first you're saying like three more weeks, well, that's overwhelming to me, because I can't even sleep at night for what this is doing. So, I, I know you guys are working hard to find a solution to this, and I do appreciate that, but it's just like, I feel like I'm living in Bailey Armageddon out there, I think we all do. You know, it's just, I, I don't know what the answer is, I know you're working on it, but to say you can't find the leak, I'm sorry, I can't go along with that, neither can Bob or anyone's living out there.
Well, if we can find it, we'll find it, we'll come out tomorrow.
Yeah.
We have to bring out that one up there and take down.
You know, we don't know. And, and it is deep out there that pipe when they dug up, well, you can see, it was like they were looking for a needle on a haystack, I kept telling them where it was from the previous two breaks, and basically, they didn't listen, and I just kept digging more and more and more, and my yard was dug up probably three times the area of any other home in Bailey Court.
Well, it's been leaking now for a while, so if we get down there, if it's been leaking, it's gonna be pretty ugly.
Well, I noticed the, the pipe noise, I noticed when I got home on Saturday night. You know, prior to that, I didn't notice it, so something has happened from when I left my home on Wednesday and returned on Saturday, something significant happened in that time period for the difference within my home.
Was there work going on out there?
No. No, I, I just don't know if it's what the leak was, perhaps it was small to begin with, because like Bob noticed it on the electrical part of it, and then perhaps the hole has gotten bigger, I don't know, but I definitely think it is damage done by something that Gentini did. I, I can't see otherwise.
Well, we'll-
When you look at those pictures, I mean-
We'll get, we'll get a look out on it, and, and we'll do it, both cases.
I think, and I, and again, I thank you for addressing that when you came out to my home, so I do thank you for that.
Any further kind of public comments?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the public.
Ryan from Board Twenty-One Bailey Court. I was told you might be coming out tomorrow, Ray, to look at houses and if we have concerns or, I, I had a note from my neighbor, who gave me one saying that you might come out.
For myself, Steve Wright, and Gentini, Joe Gentini, are gonna do a walkthrough to do a punch list tomorrow. We're not gonna go home to home.
Okay.
We're just, we're gonna walk through, there was a list, I believe Charlie kind of started that, and I don't know where I went from there. They're supposed to email Pete the concerns, so that we could have this list in front of us tomorrow when we walk it, because if we were to go door to door, you know, there's no way we'd be able to hold everybody, and it would-
Yeah. I was just curious, I was sure that it wasn't gonna be till next year, it was gonna be fixed, and I just wondered if that was, you know, true, or if we're not gonna be able to hook up till then, and then, and then also, I did have, I had an electric dog fence that ran around the entire property, and Gentini dug it up and moved it to one side, and I was able to repair it. Princeton has totally made it disappear, and I don't feel like it should be my time to put it all back. I've got the material, but I don't, I, I mean, I shouldn't spend three or four hours up there messing with something I didn't destroy. And I was told, when I told them they could come through my property for easement, they were told about the fence, and they said they would take care of it, which they, they didn't, they destroyed it and haven't done nothing for it, and so, I mean-
Who destroyed it?
Well, it would've been Princeton, it was one that did the easement through the actual side of the property. Now, I don't know that they destroyed it so much as made it disappear.
It was-
Yeah, so apple linesness, and I, you know, I just, I would like that fixed before winter, because, you know, if my dog was smart enough to know that he doesn't have a fence there now, you know.
Obviously, I was not aware that Tim's gonna do his walkthrough with the contractor, which is great. He's gonna make his list of things or issues, he'll make sure he puts on your list, even though that, that is our city's responsibility, we'll put that on the list too, we'll make sure we do that thing.
I was, I was just curious.
That is on our list. John Eggers has a list for the water, and your fence, invisible fence is on there.
Okay. None of the-
We have a guy to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is on the list, we've been looking at addressing that area out back in there, and that was on the list.
Great, very neat.
What's your name again for the record?
Ryan Scamble.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Thanks. Any additional public comments? I would say, you know, we've got a short, we've got a short week, and we're leading up into Homestead Festival weekend, this is the biggest weekend in Princeton on a year-to-year basis, and we expect thousands and thousands of people coming to town, expecting a beautiful weekend, they're going for seventy degrees and sunny, so be safe and have fun and enjoy the weekend. I'll entertain a motion for the executive session.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn to executive session under LMI Code to discuss pending litigation, and then reconvene for our regular meeting on Monday, September twenty-first at seven P.M. here at City Hall.
I second.
I'll second. Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.